Evening everyone and good evening to our audience that's viewing this. I'm Andy Dawkins and I want to start out by saying that it's take two. I'm not usually nervous, but maybe that'll make everyone less nervous too. All right. Good evening everyone and to our viewing audience as well and welcome to our candidates tonight for the Ward One City Council Forum discussion that we're going to have so that all of you out there watching can get a better idea of who you might want to vote for come Election Day on November 7. We've got to thank SPNN, the St. Paul Neighborhood Network, for filming this tonight and putting it on TV. It'll be on multiple times to view, so there's going to be a lot of times for people to see what the answers are tonight. I'm Andy Dawkins. I'm former state representative for 15 years in St. Paul in the Ward One neighborhoods. I represented Frog Town and Rondo at the state capitol. And then I ran unsuccessfully for mayor in 1993.
Hi, my name is Abu Naim. I'm the former Ward One St. Paul City Council candidate and currently I'm a board member of the Hamlin Midway Coalition.
So I'd like to also explain what St. Paul Strong is. And St. Paul Strong is a nonpartisan group that believes in transparency and accountability in city government. We don't pick candidates, we don't make choices that way, we just like to do an interview that should be totally unbiased in favor of anyone. There'll be no opening statements tonight, but we'll end up, after alternating the answers with the questions, we'll end up with a one-minute close. And when we get down to the last five minutes, I'll get a signal and we'll say, "Okay." And I think that maybe we'll start the closes in the opposite direction. So Mr. Lowe, you might be expected to go first when we get to a close. All right, so I want to compliment all of you on your thoughtful responses to our questionnaire. And I want to let the viewers know that they can go look at the questionnaire answers by going to stpaulstrong.com. It's spelled out, stpaulstrong, one word, dot com. And I want to let the candidates know that you can supplement your answers after tomorrow night. If you want to go back and look at your questionnaire answers that you gave to us and amend them or add to them, you're totally welcome to do that if you'd like to do that. I want the viewers to know though that they can go and look at those responses that you did to our questionnaire. I want to also say that we have three candidates who are not here tonight. We have Anika Bowie, we have no Travis Hellcamp, and we have no Lucky Rosenbloom. All three of them are running as well. And you know, it's a shame, they didn't want to come here and be transparent and give their answers as well. So good luck to the five of you as you go forward, okay? First question, and this is for Mr. Jeff Zeitler. You've just knocked on my door. You've got 20 seconds to tell me why I should vote for you.
Well, that's quite a good question. Thank you. And thank you, St. Paul Strong, for hosting this forum. Vote for me because, I'll tell you the truth, I'll be straight up with you, I'll be honest with you. I'm a moderate candidate. I'm neither a Democrat nor a Republican, and I don't wish to be. I'm fiscally on the conservative side.
Ms. Yan Chen, 20 seconds.
When I show you the flyer, I will be accountable for the agenda. I wanted to make it happen because it took me a while to sort of, to think through what agenda I want to put on, but once I put on my agenda, I will be accountable.
Mr. Omar Sayed.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Yes, I don't knock your door because, believe me, I am the only candidate who has a city government experience. And I'm a city planning commission, I represent you as a planning commission, and I will represent you as a city council. Thank you.
Ms. Sue Worley.
You should vote for me because I have worked for several candidates that are very progressive, like Philippe Cunningham and Susan Allen. I have several high-profile endorsements by urban planning experts like Bill Lindicky. And I want to work for a Streets For All platform that allows for greater disability, or greater accessibility for people with disabilities, and also improved cycling access.
Mr. James Lowe.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dawkins. You should vote for me because I believe I'm the best candidate, living here 30 years in Frog Town and Ward One neighborhood here. I'm an educator, I'm a father, I'm a small business owner, I'm really involved in the community. And again, my goal is to make sure that we make St. Paul better by focusing on core services and make sure to focus on your voice, and your voice should be heard at City Hall.
All right, second question, and this one will start with Ms. Yan Chen. You're out visiting relatives in rural Minnesota. Your uncle asks you, "Why do you like living in St. Paul?"
St. Paul is a very diverse city. I feel comfortable. And I did not know why I feel comfortable until I started to do door knocking in St. Paul, in the Ward One. I think I realized that it is a very diverse and it's integrated diversity, right? Because you can have a diversity and segregated diversity. But because we're integrated, I mean, clearly the immigrant is not completely integrated yet because their language vary. But I think after a couple generations, they all start to spreading out and become mingle together. And I think this is really unique strength of our world and make our world much more tolerant and open-minded. And so I think that's unique, that's something beautiful about St. Paul.
Thank you. Mr. Omar Sayed.
Well, thank you. And what was the question again?
The question was, you're out visiting your uncle in rural Minnesota, and he asked you, "Why do you like living in St. Paul?"
Well, thank you. I came here to St. Paul as a refugee 25 years ago. That I went to St. Paul in public school, and I am a father and husband here in St. Paul. And then also, I own two small businesses in St. Paul. And I love St. Paul because the city that welcomes me as a refugee person here in St. Paul and Ward One. And as a small business owner, and I, you know, I love to service my community in Ward One and St. Paul. And also, I serve a city planning commission in St. Paul, and also I'm a vice chair of St. Paul. And yes, my vision is that St. Paul is that to build affordable housing. That's what I am here and St. Paul to serve.
Ms. Sue Worley, so what are you going to tell your uncle?
Well, I would tell my uncle that I love St. Paul for the same reason that I bought my Victorian house, which is that it has irresistible charm, the food is really good, and it may be a little rough around the edges, but with some dedicated investment and time, it can live up to its full potential.
Thank you. Mr. James Lowe.
Uncle, I love living in St. Paul for a lot of reasons. First of all, the people here. We have amazing people, our diversity here from all walks of life. We have an international of people here in Ward One. Our diversity is our strength. The food here, we have amazing food. For example, Marie Hill Bakery from France, Paris, right here in Frog Town, and actually now, in some other neighborhood right now. Our great school, our affordable housing, our parks in Iraq are all the great reason why I love living in St. Paul.
Thank you. Mr. Jeff Zeitler.
Well, I've actually had this actual conversation with rural relatives, and I love St. Paul. I didn't ever intend to move here, but I ended up here, and I absolutely love this place. It's a community, it's a real community, with people from all different walks of life, all different types of people. My wife and I have very different backgrounds, and we both love it here. Our kids are going to public school, and we're glad to be in a city that has, a large city that has good public schools. So all these things have helped to keep us in St. Paul.
Thank you. Abu, do you have a question for Mr. Sayed, Omar Sayed?
Yes. What is the least favorite thing living in St. Paul?
Well, yes, I love St. Paul because the first city that allowed me to open a small business, that's St. Paul.
Yeah, least favorite thing.
Least favorite?
Oh, the least favors. Well, when I drove on the wintertime, on the summertime, I see the potholes.
Ms. Worley, same question.
Potholes is definitely one. It's very difficult to bike here, I don't own a car, and every time I try to bike anywhere, I take my life in my hands, and I think we could be doing a lot better on that.
Mr. Lowe.
One of the least favorite things is just the safety, public safety piece. We have a lot of room to improve here, you know, talk to the resident about catalytic converter being stolen, you know, cars broken into, just being fearful, right? You know, just to have that in mind, like, St. Paul could be better if we can work on public safety piece. So again, if we work on that, that's my least favorite part, other than that, we are an amazing city.
Mr. Jeff Zeitler.
The streets were impassable this winter. They were barely plowed, at least in our area, they were barely plowed. And then the potholes in the spring were kind of a shock. But I'd say that my least favorite part unfortunately is the recent rise in crime. We had a catalytic converter stolen, we've had our garage broken into. I've had my car gone through multiple times in the last year, and I'd say that doesn't make me happy.
Ms. Yan Chen.
I guess I would echo with him, but I also would say a little bit about the cleanliness. I led a lot of leaders over the city in St. Paul, and I see if we don't care as a city, and that's making me sad.
Ms. Worley, you go first on this one. I want you to tell me and Abu and the audience something that makes us know you in your gut get it about racism.
Well, I would not say that I could ever get racism the way a person who wasn't white would get racism. I am a Jewish person, so I do understand what it feels like to be a minority, and I work to be anti-racist. It is an ongoing, never-ending process. But yeah, I don't think I could, I mean, I do my best, but I don't think I get racism per se.
Mr. James Lowe.
Racism is something that is real, it's happening in our community. As a small American male, something that I witnessed throughout the year is just my personal struggle of being picked on when I was younger in school, being bullied, and just the marginalization of just the oppressed from the system. So to me, as an educator, this is something that is close and personal. I work hard every single day to make sure we combat racism and make sure that we have a better understanding in our community.
Mr. Jeff Zeitler.
Well, as a white guy, I haven't had to deal with racism directly myself, I'll be honest. My wife is an immigrant, a woman of color, and we're raising mixed-race kids. So seeing the reaction, the different reactions that people have to me and to her when we're out together has taught me a lot. Our kids are growing up in a very different world than I grew up in, but I think they're doing well in it. It's, I think it's good to see. St. Paul has been good to them.
Thank you. Ms. Yan Chen.
Could you repeat the question again?
Yeah, I want to hear something from you that tells the audience that you get it in your gut about racism.
I think the sad truth is when people, before they even able to open their mouth, already has a stereotype upon them. And it's sad as a human being. I think one of the things is, how can you feel good about yourself if you feel immediately already inferior to somebody else without even able to speak a word or say anything? So I think, yes, I feel sad.
Mr. Omar Sayed.
Well, I grew up in St. Paul, and I went to high school in St. Paul, and I seen that where our children, and even myself, I, you know, I had a Neapolitan, I have raised them. But since I grew up, I seen that a little bit getting better in St. Paul. And yes, and it's still there, but we need to do much better than.
And thank you. Mr. Naim, you got the next question? We start with Mr. Lowe's answer?
Yeah, so to mirror Andy's question, tell me something that you get, that you really understand what inequity and poverty is.
Mr. Lowe's turn, go first.
Thank you, Mr. Naim. Yeah, inequity and poverty is something that my family, we went through and anyway we're going through. I think growing up as, right here in St. Paul, you know, being first immigrant here in St. Paul, to go through where my mom was making $12,000 a year and have to provide for all eight siblings, where my father was on social security. So the poverty piece is near and dear to my heart, that's why I worked twice as hard. I was the first one to get to college, get my master's degree, and become an educator to combat the equity piece. So there's a lot of work to do, but as long as you work hard in this society, you will make it, and you gotta just keep working hard and believing yourself, and I'll just keep going strong.
Mr. Zeitler.
Well, I own a business now. I've done, I'd like to say I've done pretty well for myself. Growing up though, I was the kid who got reduced lunch, for a while, free lunch in school. And where I grew up, you had to walk up to the front of the classroom every Monday and pay your lunch money, or announce that you had free lunch or reduced lunch. And I was one of two kids who got reduced lunch. For a while, I was the only kid who got free lunch. And that was an education in being humble, I think, that I've never, I've tried not to forget.
Ms. Chen.
I guess the first time I realized I'm vulnerable was when I just came to America as a foreign student. And life in China at that time was a purely communist society. So it was resource poor, but we never needed to worry about the financial stability. I think when you start to realize, oh my God, my life depends on my income, and how can I support myself? That was an eye-opening experience. And yes, I think it make an impact on you and make you start to realize the vulnerability of a human being.
Mr. Sayed.
Well, this question really touched me because my mom and dad, where we grew up, and we still have in Somalia, we grew up a small village and with no water and no electricity. And yes, and I, we grew up and with no, even sometimes we eat once a day and with no food. But I am here and with my family, my son, I mean, my wife and dad, my wife and son, and it's, you know, I still support my family, and I'm happy to see that I'm here to support my family.
Ms. Sue Worley.
Well, the way that I have come to understand inequity and racism is through reading, mostly, reading articles by people of color, reading books, some of them fiction, some of them nonfiction, and you know, watching documentaries. I think that, you know, you can never, as I said before, you can never fully learn, but I do try to listen to other people, like obviously the George Floyd murder was horrifying, and you know, I saw people who were trying to protest just to get, you know, more police accountability, getting maced. That's been something that was horrifying, and I believe in trying to make things more equitable, including, like, I would say, what's the word I'm looking for? Reparations. I support, you know, any program that helps to right historical wrongs, basically.
Thanks. Mr. Zeitler, we're going to go, start with you on this question. What was the last volunteer activity you engaged in?
Oh, man. Well, I helped out in my kid's school. I brought a, I made a potatoes, cheesy potatoes for the exchange students showing up at my kid's school.
Ms. Yan Chen.
I guess I'm a too quiet person to volunteer things. That's, I have to say, it's my weakness. I have, I cannot remember, to be honest with you.
Okay, Mr. Sayed.
Yeah, I do, I do volunteers and through my businesses, and each month that we do community service, and that we give them back to the community.
Thank you. Ms. Worley.
The last volunteer activity I did was on Saturday. There's, I'm in a madrigal singing group called the Elizabethan Singers. We dress in full Elizabethan or Tudor garb, and we sing at the Renaissance Festival, but on Saturday I sang at the Pine Tree Orchard, and the people who were waiting in line to buy apples got to hear us sing, so that was really fun.
Okay, Mr. Lowe.
All right, I've dedicated my life to volunteering. It's kind of part of my blood and who I am. Anytime I could, I'm out there volunteering, giving back to the community. One is, example is last week Wednesday, I was helping my students stay after school to volunteer with social study homework, so that's one example. Another one here is last weekend, Agape Mon Garden, where we give experience, we invite the community to come out, check out the Mon Garden in Hugo, Minnesota here, where it has Mon House and Mon Artifacts, stuff like that, and to really celebrate the Mon piece by giving opportunity for the community to come check it out. So thank you.
Abu, you have a question to start with? Ms. Chen?
Yes. Who has been a role model for you?
Henry Wallace, actually.
Who?
Henry Wallace.
Tell us about him.
So he is the vice president for the, for the, the vice president for FDR. He, I think he didn't get in the second term, but he was the first vice president, I mean, he was the vice president, I think, since 19, I don't know, the second term of FDR. And to me, he is amazing because he is a scientist, and I think because there is certain personality similarity, he is quiet, and, but he is not a politician, but he did really revolutionize American agriculture, the whole agriculture, put the science into agriculture sector. And also, I think he played a bigger role in the Great Depression time to provide the, make sure the agriculture provided food for the people and able to regulate in the business, so start to regulating the agriculture business. So to me, he was, you hardly hear from him. I think he is actually the first one started the Progressive Party.
Mr. Henry Wallace.
Henry Wallace.
Very good.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Sayed.
Well, I was impressed.
Well, I have, I have two people that in my mind that, who, if, you know, that who always I think about, or I talk to them if I, you know, question, or, one of them that, my friend that who works in the banks. And when I first tried to open a small business, and he, the one who says, you know, "And you can do this business because of, you know, your knowledge." And the first business. Second business, I spoke to one of other friends and my wife, and they said, "Yes, you can do the other in the second business," because you did the first one first.
Thanks. Ms. Worley.
Well, I have a lot of role models, but I'd say one that stands out would be Senator Erin Murphy. She's unapologetically progressive, she works to help other elected officials in swing districts get elected. She isn't afraid to go out and knock doors for candidates who share her beliefs, and she's working to make the state a better place.
Thank you. Mr. Lowe.
Yeah, for me, I have a lot of role model, but most importantly, I want to highlight both my parents. My father, Nortir Lowe, and my mom, Chow Yang. My mom recently passed away about 10 months back, and I dedicated my campaign to my mom and my parents and all the parents out there, because parents are the ones who give their own birth to us, but my parents teach me a good value, how to be a good person, how to give back, help the community, you know, the push of getting a good quality education and have a full-time job, that is something that you're passionate about. So I'm able to be here today because of my parents, and again, gratitude to all the parents who have kids. So thank you to my parents and all the parents out there.
Mr. Zeitler.
Well, the first vote I ever cast when I was 18 was for Paul Wellstone. And Paul Wellstone, although I'm, I call myself a centrist and a moderate now, Paul Wellstone, I always admired because he took a stand and he had guts. He never backed down. He was the, I believe, the lone voice to vote against the war in Iraq when nobody else is supporting him. So I would say, I would like to, at least in some ways, follow in Paul Wellstone's footsteps and, you know, not back down and stand for what I feel is right when I feel it needs to be done.
Thank you. All right, next question, we'll start with Ms. Chen, I believe it's your turn to start first, right? Okay, good. How are you advantaging ranked choice voting as a strategy in this election?
Me again?
Oh, thanks. Mr. Sayed, your turn.
Is ranked choice is tough. Even I don't really know on how it works. And because in, if somebody from ranked choice and listening to us or watching us, I, you know, I do have questions, then we need to teach that, our community.
Okay, we'll get back to that. Ms. Worley, how are you advantaging ranked choice voting?
Well, I do support ranked choice voting. I think it's great. It gets rid of the spoiler effect, which is huge. I am doing it two different ways. The first way is by keeping a clean, you know, positive, issues-based candidacy, kind of like the politics of joy that Erin Murphy does. And the second way is when someone says they're voting for someone else and it will not be moved, I say, "That's fine, go ahead and vote for me as your second choice." And so far, everyone has said, "Okay, I will." So it's been really useful.
Mr. Lowe.
Yeah, I do too. I support ranked choice voting, and how I'm taking advantage of this is simply what Ms. Worley talked about is, you know, we're talking to at the door, we're phone banking, hey, you know, "Can I count on you to be my first choice?" And when they say, "I'm sorry, you can't," then I say, "You know what? We are a ranked choice city here. Can I count on you in my second vote?" And most of them say, "Yes." So that's how I'm leveraging the ranked choice, and if not, I say, "Can I be your third choice?" So now, you know, "Can I be your fourth choice?" Right? So that's how I'm taking advantage of the ranked choice voting. Thank you, Mr. Dawkins.
Mr. Zeitler.
Well, similar to both of your answers, I, you know, I try to talk to everyone, and if I see someone else's sign in a yard, I don't walk away. I talk to them and say, "Hey, I'd love to be your second choice, or your third, or, you know, hopefully not your eighth, but please, please put me on the ballot if you agree with even a little bit of what I'm saying."
Ms. Chen.
I would echo with everybody, except I want to point out one thing, I also trying to talk to the Republican. For whatever reason, seem it's the Republican quite often really hate ranking choice, which I don't understand the why, because they seem feel our St. Paul politics become the way it is because the ranking choice, which I don't agree with. I think it was because hated to say they don't have a strong candidate. So don't blame on the ranking choice for the failure of St. Paul politics.
Yeah, that's good. So for the audience that's watching this, ranked choice voting, we have eight candidates running in Ward One, right? Is it likely that one of them is going to get 50% plus one of all the votes on the first count-through? Very unlikely. So then the last-place finisher who's in eighth gets dropped off, and all the voters who voted for that eighth, that last-place finisher, look at the ballot again and say, "Who was their second choice?" And so if one of you is a frontrunner and you got 49%, but you didn't get to the 50% plus one, you're in the lead, but you haven't got there yet, so we're going to go to the last-place finisher, and then if you get over 50%, the election's over. But if not, we're going to go to the second-to-last-place finisher, drop that person off, and look to who everybody voted for. So it's very important for you candidates to be out there saying, "Yeah, you know, I'd love your vote as the first choice, but, you know, and you got a favorite already, but here's why I'd like to earn your vote to be the second choice." So that's a good way to think about doing it. All right, who's up next question? Is it your turn, Abu?
Yes, it's Sue Worley. So, is your neighborhood safe, and what makes a safe neighborhood?
That's a great question. I should, before I begin, I should mention that I've felt safe pretty much everywhere I've been in the Twin Cities. I don't own a car, I know I keep saying that. I bike, walk, and bus everywhere, and I have virtually never felt unsafe, maybe once or twice in two decades. So it's not really about whether I feel safe, it's about whether other people feel safe to me, and I have noticed that there are people who are increasingly not feeling safe. But I would say what makes a safe neighborhood is people trusting each other, being able to like watch out for each other, and also just, you know, having a lot of foot traffic makes it safer because there's more eyes on the sidewalk, you know? And then just in safety and safer accessibility when you're trying to cross the street so you're not going to get hit by a car, better separated, protected bike lanes so that you're not being hit by a car. I'm actually much more concerned about being hit by a car than I am about being mugged. I know maybe that isn't everybody, but that's my primary safety concern.
Mr. Lowe.
You know, this is, it depends, right? Yes and no, but for me, I'm going to A on the side, do you feel safe? So sometime, no. You know, my family, we grew up in Frog Town for the last 30 years here, and unfortunately sometime, you know, you just have to watch your back. We have incidences, we have things taken from our cars, and, you know, the fear is always there sometimes. So I want to be honest with the audience, so if you're feeling that, I can relate. I have kids, and sometime I don't allow my kids to sometime walk across the street without my supervision as a parent. So we have work to do and making sure that our community is safer. And again, that's the thing about Ward One is we have different community that we feel differently depending on where you live in your zip code. So most importantly, as a next city council member, I'm going to work and make sure that we continue to make St. Paul here and Ward One here safer. Thank you.
Yeah, good. Mr. Zeitler.
Well, I'd say this, you know, there's two different ways of looking at safety. There's personal safety and there's, you know, property safety. There's personal crime and property crime. I'd say as far as personal safety, our neighborhood is mostly safe. Now, does that mean it's safe for everyone? No. Does it mean it's safe for young kids? Like when my kids were young, did I want them running down, you know, being out of sight of the house? Not necessarily. Do I feel threatened, you know, walking down the street? No. But, you know, the city should be safe for everyone. That's the key thing. You know, just because I don't feel threatened doesn't mean the city is safe for everyone. The second thing is property crime. Some people like to say, "Oh, it doesn't matter, they're just things." Well, if my bike is stolen and I need it to get to work, or my car is stolen, I need that car to get to work, that matters. That's a real quality of life issue. I think we've seen a much bigger slip in property crime and safety of your stuff in your garage over the last three, four years.
Ms. Chen.
I would agree with what Jeff said, and I think it's the nuisance crime, and that sort of destroyed the social fabric. And it's like when I go, when I'm walking in the yard, I don't want to leave my tools, especially power tools, in the yard because when I turn around. So, it's these kind of insidious fear, not really necessarily worry about the violent crime because it's really watch out of your back, the least kind of opportunistic crime can be really hurt, I mean, change your cycle. So, that's how I feel.
Mr. Said.
Yeah, well, I grew up in Summit Hill area. When I move on, it was, was, you know, the safer, the, the safety wasn't good over there and it's still not good. But, and as a father and I, when I'm taking my kids in the morning to cross the street, I usually look at it and, you know, how, you know, how we can cross the road. And yes, and we need to do much better to, for safety in, in Saint Paul. And I will work with our neighbors and, and, and also the community leaders and to make better safe in Saint Paul.
Okay, Ms. Worley. Ms. Worley.
Could I, could you repeat the question, please?
Yeah, Abu?
Yeah. Is your neighborhood safe? Wait, did you answer?
I answered already, yeah.
Oh, jeez, thanks for being better. Moderating this than I'm doing.
The answer is yes, my neighborhood is safe.
Oh, yeah, all right, great, sorry. All right, now, this next one I am going to ask and I think that the first person this time is going to be Mr. Lo, if I got that right, okay. It's a long question and I'll read it slowly, okay? So, how will you work to reconcile the reality that people living in different parts of the city have had different lived experiences regarding public safety? How will you work for solutions that are citywide, inclusive and reflect multiple lived experiences? Mr. Lo.
Yeah, you know, I think, you know, Mr. Dokken, I, as I alluded to my, my response earlier, I am a candidate where I lived for a long time and, and I get to see the bad, the good and the ugly in our city here. So, I will definitely work with everybody here. I think what I'm going to do here is into the solution here, we got to make sure that our neighbors' voices are heard. So, what I would do is champion a, a link, a website, go into different community here, to different parks and recs, to different neighborhood, to, to the residents and say, hey, are you concerned? Really do a in-depth survey here, comprehensive survey here to see how different parts of the community are feeling about their neighborhood because we know block to blocks is so different. In addition to that, I'm going to work with local, local law enforcement here, with Saint Paul police here. They need to be part of this picture, we got to hold them accountable, but we also ask them for their support as well. So, that's what I would do is with law enforcement, with our fellow city council member to make sure that voices are heard and that we are responsive to the different needs of different parts of the, the neighborhood here. Thank you.
Mr. Saidler, so you're representing the whole city when you're on the city council and there's folks that live on Highland Parkway and there's folks that live on Payne Avenue on the east side. And the folks in Highland Parkway have one idea about what makes, what we got to do to have a citywide safety way of doing things and the folks that are kind of in the heart of a, a tough neighborhood might feel differently. How are you going to reconcile those and work on a citywide solution?
Well, there's, you know, safety, there's, there's two, there's two components really, like there's neighbors watching out for each other, you know, that's, that's one component of safety and there's the police, you know, kind of the outside force coming in, that's another component. Unfortunately, you know, it seems often the poorest neighborhoods are the hardest hit by crime and I think defunding the police has been a failure. It has been a failure. The whole notion of defunding the police has, has really caused higher, higher crime in the city. And I think it's a difficult thing to say, but unfortunately, it's true. How do you reconcile this? Well, I think Highland Park gets police calls, the police come faster to Highland Park. Do they come fast to Payne Phelan? No. The police need to show up quicker to every address, particularly addresses they haven't been showing up to. That's, they're, they're getting paid to do this. I don't think they can make many excuses. They need to show up every time, every place. That's all I got to say.
Ms. Chen.
From door knocking, my experience has been there's two type of crime. One is hot, what I call hot spots. Hot spots usually happen in the disadvantaged neighborhood. So, my, the goal is really remove the hot spot in the disadvantaged neighborhood. But there is another crime, type of crime, which is random crime. That actually happen everywhere. And for random crime, I think for us, we really first need to establish what I mean by crime. Because one of the things is loitering a crime. Personally, I would say no, but on this hand, when you're loitering while stealing, that considered is a crime. So, I think we first have to identify what I mean by crime. And once we identify it, I think we just have to catch the people and put them into, county has to prosecute them and my hope is really the state to reform them. That's a very important step. And whether through job training, whether through counseling, whether through life skill management, people need to getting reformed. And in my opinion, that's the state job and we need to hold the state accountable for them to reform people once they commit a crime.
Mr. Said.
Well, as a same, you know, as a city council and I will work with our, you know, my colleagues at city councils to make sure that citywide has, um, the safety. And yes, some area might be less crime and, you know, other ones might be more crime, especially in Ward One. We have two parts and in, in one side of Frog Town may have more crimes, but we need to make sure that we have to have more police there. We need to hire more police there and also we have to be accountable to the police. And the other one that we need to have, uh, community leaders and faith leaders are working with the city councils to make sure that we, our neighbors are safe. That's, that's, that's my, my vision would be.
Ms. Worley.
Thank you. So, I do my best to be pithy, but I'm going to be honest, there isn't enough time allocated to answer the level of complexity in your question, but I will do my best. I'd like to address catalytic converters since that has been the thing that has been brought up by my colleagues here. There was a Republican legislator whose name escapes me at the state level who, who's operating a chop shop and he voted against funding for, for the state to crack down on catalytic converter thefts by tracing them up to the, to the chop shops, basically, to the people who were in charge. A lot of organized crime is top-down and then there's people who are on the street just sort of stealing and then, but they sell to people who are breaking the law and buying catalytic converters when they should not be. So, the clear answer was that legislator ended up not getting reelected and they ended up funding a program to, you know, to stop the catalytic converter thefts and hopefully that will help. But that's the kind of thing we need to be doing is working with the state, finding out where this crime is coming from. A lot of it is not necessarily even in the city, it's like out of the state or out of the, the county. Not always, of course, there's always petty crime and gang violence. For gang violence, I would definitely address it by using a violence interrupter-like program. It's in Chicago, it's kind of like a witness protection program for, instead of like the FBI doing witness protection for big mob bosses in New York, this would be a smaller program done through the city, which would offer, it would prevent reciprocal violence from gang violence. It offers people an assumed identity, takes them out of the neighborhood, offers them housing, a job, just basically offers them a chance to not shoot the person back. And it's, a, a similar program in Chicago led to a 40% reduction in violent crime in the first year. So, I would support something like that. I believe in restorative justice practices where possible. I, I think that we should be looking at other ways to prevent crime rather than just shooting people or putting them in prison.
So, I'm going to say right now that, we'll have everyone give a chance again on this, but Ms. Worley, the Chicago program does what and what are we going to do at the city level in Saint Paul to imitate it? What do you want to do when you get elected, if you do? What's the Chicago program you're talking about?
Yeah, it's like a witness protection program.
Okay.
So, like, let's say someone tries to shoot somebody else and misses, instead of that person who just almost got shot trying to shoot that person back, they could go to a city office and say, I need to lay low for a while, someone's trying to kill me. They could potentially participate in the investigation and it's not like an informant program. Informant programs don't offer protection to the informants and informants have a very high fatality rate, which makes it not a good program, I think, because you don't want people to be killed for cooperating with an investigation. So, the violence interrupter program was actually organized for by Philippe Cunningham when he lived in Chicago and then he worked to implement it in Minneapolis as the Office of Violence Prevention. So, I just want to do something like that.
That's good. Let's give everybody a chance to add more. Mr. Lo, you want to add anything to the, this questions, the answers to this question?
Yeah, you know, I think what I want to add is something, you know, into the, you know, that we haven't talked about is I think public safety here and to, to make sure that everyone's voices are heard. One of the things is we have to start them young. You know, I think as an educator, you know, one of the piece is, you know, safety starts from the school setting. It starts when they were younger, elementary to middle school and high school and then when they become an adult. So, we have to, in a way, shape our young minds here about making good choices. So, I will be, as the next city council member, I will be interested in working with our school board here to make sure that we look at restorative practices, to make sure we look at, you know, you know, mindfulness, to look at different approaches so that our kids can start making good choices when they're young. So, when they get to their adult life, 18 and over, they can continue to make good choices. So, again, public safety, different neighborhood have different needs and we have to be targeted but also have systematic within our school system here and our community partnership to make sure that we bring the, the concern, public safety, the correct lower or down as minimal as possible.
Mr. Saidler, anything to add?
Actually, when I was out flyering, I met a couple of guys on Rice Street who were, they're representing their church and they were trying to interrupt violence by handing out water and meeting people and talking to people and just being a presence in the community and I thought, that is really cool. It's a great thing they're doing. However, we can't rely on volunteers and people, you know, doing things, you know, on a volunteer basis to stop violence. I mean, we do still have to have a traditional police department to, you know, be the backbone of the system.
Ms. Chen, anything to add?
Maybe the, through the park and the recreation sector, because I think when kids have nothing to do, especially in the summertime, that's actually what I heard during, when, during the summertime, when the door knocking, a lot of parents complained, there's not enough programs for the kids. Maybe we have enough facility, but if we don't have enough programs for the kids, they can do in the wrong, they will fall into the wrong hands and also have more talk about the volunteer. I'm pretty sure there will be a lot of people willing to volunteer to take, like start a sports group and, but so that's really up to city council or district council to organize all these activities or maybe work with the park and the recreation. So, I think city council has to be very active about using park and the recreation as alternative approach because, you know, school board is a little bit different. So, but since the city council do have the power over park and the recreation, we should be very mindful how we budget this sector and make sure kids has a venue to go to.
Mr. Said.
Well, here are a couple of things I want to add. First of all, when we say that crime or, or in Saint Paul, that it come up to our youth and, um, yes, we need to have our, our park and recreation center, we need to have, you know, accessible place that our kids can play basketball or, or soccer and can play in every summertime. And, and also, we need to have a healing center in, in, in Saint Paul in, in that whoever using our kids, if they using our kids with drugs, that can have a healing center. I'm proud, one of in, in Frog Town, they just opened it a couple, a couple of years ago. It, it works, it works every day and, 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 you know, and I'm, I'm so proud of that. So, yeah, we need more of that to happen in, in Saint Paul to make sure that our, we're not letting out our kids to, even when they have drugs or when they have, in, 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 in something that gone outside and playing. So, thus will be, I will be working as a city council member, we need to have, we will have more, um, healing centers and also we need to have more of the soccer or, or basket and tournament in somewhere in, in, in Ward One, Saint Paul.
So, I think we're going to do one more question and then take a five-minute break. Everybody can relax for a couple of minutes and, and I don't know what, tell everybody to like, you know, it's nice to see you all smiling and I'm hoping you're enjoying yourself a little bit, but one last question before our break.
Yeah, so this is directed to Jeff. What personal actions you have taken to curb gun violence and if elected, what actions will you take?
What actions have I taken to curb gun violence? Boy, that's, I didn't expect that one. I've not done anything much personally to curb gun violence, to be very honest with you. And I would love to see it reduced, but I have not done anything, yeah, on my own to do so. I'd be interested to hear others' responses.
But what would you do if you got elected?
To curb gun violence?
Yeah.
Well, I think it's great to see folks out in the street, like the guys on Rice Street, like just being there, watching, being good neighbors, you know, giving people bottles of water and like just being witnesses to what's going on. I think that's really valuable, you know? People being there and neighbors watching the street makes a big difference. I think that is the biggest crime deterrent of anything, just good people standing there watching and, you know, often it's teenage kids, you know, they're not, if there's an older person they're watching, they're probably not going to do some of the things they would do otherwise. So, I think that's the most valuable thing, just neighbors getting out of their houses, not watching TV, to actually talking to the neighbors and actually seeing what's going on, on the street in front of their house. I think that's the most valuable thing.
Ms. Chen.
I guess, um, yes, gun violence, hopefully we can break this cycle before getting there because, I mean, given the amount of gun, the availability of the guns and it is just hope, I guess we have to strengthen people in terms of their, their ability to cope the problem. And when the issue become a lot of life management skill. And so, I guess the first thing we needed to work was the neighborhood identified the signal when things start happening. Is domestic issue, is, um, basically, I think there must be a lot of sign first showing up. I will work with the police to understand what signs start showing up. Once you can identify the signs and let's work with the police how to disperse the sign because I'm pretty sure there is something coming before that and we just need to have the community force gathering together, able to identify these signs and try, trying to disperse them before that happening.
Mr. Said, what have you done, if anything, to personally to deal with gun violence and what would be a solution to gun violence if elected?
Well, first of all, in a couple of weeks ago, one of the, our voters in East, in, in Ward One called me, says, my son had a gun in, in last night and then, and then he brought it home. And then the family says, what we can do? And I went there and I told them, hey, we spoke same language and let's sit down this, um, you know, we'll, we'll not, we'll call the police, you know, we'll take, we'll take, they will take the gun and let's slow down things. But what we need is that, my vision is that, instead of a, a solving problem with the police, a community, community leaders can solve the issue. Community leaders can solve, faith leaders can solve and counselor can go, and families can go to counselors and, and can solve. So, I will work with the police, I will, I will work with the family, uh, community leaders and I will work also with, with faith leaders to make sure that instead of come, you know, having, killing each other, we just need to solve it and, and reducing crimes.
Ms. Worley.
Well, in terms of reducing gun violence, the number one action I have taken is not owning a firearm. That's the number one way, like you're much more likely statistically to be killed by a firearm if you own one. So, I discourage my friends from owning one as well, although some of them do have one. Of course, it's legal to own a firearm if you have a background check and everything and I do support people's right to have one if they really need one, but they're not likely to benefit from owning one, just statistically. I also support the recent ordinance that came up for a vote and then I think it was tabled for further study, which would make it illegal to leave an unsecured firearm in your car. I think that as far as I understand, most of the handguns that are used in violent crime in Saint Paul are stolen from cars. So, basically, somebody passes a background check, buys a firearm and then leaves it unsecured in their car when they're going to the hospital or some local establishment. Someone steals, someone goes through their, their car to try to steal something, finds the gun and now... the gun, and now a petty thief has a firearm and commits violence with it. So I do support the ordinance to make it illegal to have an unsecured gun in your car.
Mr. Lowe, before I, I got a, it was tabled by the city council? They didn't vote on it?
I don't believe it's been voted into law yet.
Okay.
That was my understanding. Maybe they did it today. I didn't read the news today, but as far as I understand, it was, it was up for a vote, and they said, well, we don't understand exactly the logistics of how we're going to implement this ordinance, so we're not going to vote on it today.
Mr. Lowe?
Yeah, to me, you know, Mr. Ducking, you know, gun violence, it's a connection with domestic violence. When I was a board member, I was the Low Councilmember at Mo-18 Council. I took the lead in organizing, because when we talk, when we look at domestic violence, it's connected to gun violence in the community. So to prevent that, to curb that, we, what I did is organize a community forum where we invite the police chief and a few police officers, the county, where we do awareness and talk about education and talk about prevention, and have family members who are impacted by gun violence, talk about their story. And that's powerful to hear from them and to talk about prevention. What I would do as next city council member is, again, I am very pleased that St. Paul, we do not sell bullets in the city of St. Paul. So anyone who needs to buy bullet will have to go outside of St. Paul. So that's one way that city of St. Paul has championed in this gun violence piece. The other piece here is, you know, this is a federal issue, connected to the state. So what I would do is, I will make sure I connect with our fellow council member, organize us so that we can advocate at the county level, at the state level, and at the federal level here, to make sure we have better gun control and gun violence policy in place and legislation. Thank you.
Okay, so to the audience, I want to tell everyone that there are questionnaire responses that these folks have answered that you should go to stpaulstrong.com and check out, because we don't have time to ask all the questions. You got to go do some research to find out more about what these candidates think they'll do if they get elected. So this next question, I'll start with Abu. You ask it, and I think we start with Ms., we start with Ms. Jen.
Yes, all right. We are voting on a sales tax increase on November 7th. Are you voting yes or no? And the follow-up question is, what is your understanding where the new money will be used for? And is there sufficient guardrails?
I will vote for no. And I think I haven't even thought about the consequence, because to me, it's absolutely a no, because it's really, very irresponsible for city to even trying to increase the sales tax without looking at their current budget. Because their current budget is, they haven't, but they have neglected their infrastructure for past ten years. And they shouldn't expect residents start to pay more property tax in order to support their, for the, for the infrastructure.
And what's your understanding where the money is going to be used for?
Infrastructure, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Said?
Well, sales tax is, I'm fully support. And I am, as you know, I'm a small business owner, and it is difficult to, to, you know, my customers. But our road needed. Our road, we need to rebuild our roads. And, and yes, I support it.
Okay, Ms. Worley?
I personally will vote for the 1% sales tax. My understanding is that it's going to go into the general fund to help pay for the things we haven't been able to afford, like plowing, road repair. I do not think there are sufficient guardrails on the funding. I think that if elected, I would like to implement something called a pilot program, like they have in Boston, which requests voluntary contributions from nonprofit, non-taxpaying entities like hospitals, universities, and religious institutions. And that money would go into a dedicated, untouchable fund that would be for essential services like water, sewer, road repair, and plowing. And, and it couldn't be used by anything else. It would be a dedicated part of money.
Mr. Lowe?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ducking. Personally, I will vote no on the 1% sales tax increase on November 7th here. And the reason is, you know, simply listening to the voters, you know, being at the doors, you know, phone banking, voters, residents are saying, you know, James, that's going to impact all of us, especially with my fixed income or no matter what income, you know, higher income to, you know, a most vulnerable income owner, they're going to feel the pinch of this 1% sales tax, especially when the state just increased a 1% sales tax statewide. So that's going to make another 1% increase with us. That's going to be, St. Paul's going to be the highest sales tax probably in the state of Minnesota. And that's not okay. That's not competitive. In addition to voters, the other piece is business owners. We have small business owner here who are struggling to be competitive. We have downtown St. Paul struggling to, we have a lot of vacancy spaces in downtown St. Paul with commercial retail spaces. This is going to hurt business owner and especially small businesses here in St. Paul. And the other piece is, and talking to experts, we're going to have opposite effects. So instead of, you know, St. Paul residents shopping here, they're going to be intentional and shop with our neighbors in Roseville, would barely go somewhere else where the sales tax would be lower, especially with bigger purchases, right? For example, I was talking to a neighbor, and he's like, James, if I'm going to buy binar, buy stuff to fix my house, I'm going to pay a few thousand, a few hundred instead of shopping here in St. Paul midway, I'm going to go elsewhere to shop for that. So it's going to have opposite effect. I don't think we're going to get that $1 billion that we projected to get. So again, it's going to have the opposite effect. And I really am thinking this is not the way approach. We need to be more creative. We need to look at big project at the county, state level. I can expand on that later, but yeah, I'm going to vote no on the 1% sales tax for the people here.
Mr. Zeitler? I would also vote no. My understanding is that, yes, it's supposed to go to infrastructure, patching our roads, plowing our roads. But as an example of something it might go to is the Summit Avenue Reconstruction Plan, which is supposedly adding bike lanes, but it's a street that already has bike lanes. And the residents around there are mostly against it. It would, they would lose trees. You would add nothing of real value, spend $6.5 million of this 1% additional tax, and make the residents angry. That is not a recipe for success. Do I think there are sufficient guardrails? No. I think it would be absorbed by the general fund, and, you know, we'd probably be looking at another sales tax increase within a few years. So absolutely not. Businesses are closing all over the city right now. This is not just in theory, it's actually happening. Down the street from me, the place the, the bar and grill just closed, the TJ Maxx my wife likes shopping at, just closed. Places are closing all over the city, and it's serious. This is not, you know, just fooling around. 1% sales tax, the increase in property tax, and this is really bad for St. Paul. And if you're going to shop, you're going to have to go to Roseville for most stuff soon. And that's not good for St. Paul. It's great for Roseville, but not good for St. Paul.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to get ready to do the one-minute closes, but there's one more question first before we, that, but you can start thinking about how you want to do your close. But this is, I'm going to lump two questions together, and so respond to how you see fit. Do you support tax increment financing? What is it? What's its impact on St. Paul? And how can St. Paul increase its tax base or protect its existing tax base? Understand enough, Mr. Said? Your turn.
Okay, well, to me is I don't support other tax increasing in St. Paul. And we need to...
But we already have tax increment financing. Do you support it?
Well, are we talking about TIF?
TIF.
Okay. Well, if, I don't support TIF, no.
Okay. Ms. Worley?
I support tax increment financing. I've seen really great projects come out of it. The problem with it is that if a project does not create tax revenue, then that shortfall comes out of the general fund. So we have to be very careful and have good judgment about what projects we choose for TIF. For example, my understanding is the Kagan Case Market has not produced the tax revenue that it was projected to produce, so that was unfortunate. Although I do like, I do like the Kagan Case Market, I've gone there a few times. But yeah, I mean, we can use it for housing. Theoretically, we could use it for, to help small businesses. I do support it in principle, but you'd really have to be careful and judicious about how you implement it.
Mr. Lowe?
Yeah, you know, TIF is, to me, I think of TIF as a double-blazed sword, right? It's a tool, it's how we use it. Personally, you know, we have to be very careful, you know, intuitive principle is there, but it's just being practical. You know, I'm a person, well, St. Paul's not rich, and we got to be careful. We got to be cautious with our spending, especially with TIF here, with developer, with developing project here, to make sure that we have our good rate of return. A lot of time, I'm a believer right now where we are spending way too much TIF dollar, and we're not getting the return back to St. Paul, especially with such a low tax base that we are right now. So again, we have to be careful, we have to protect it, and we have to have a system, a better system here to allocate TIF dollars. And that's a, as a city council member, I will lead that, and I will definitely be very involved with this process.
Okay, now, Mr. Zeitler, think too about how do we increase our tax base and protect our existing tax base, as well as, do you like TIF?
Is that a new question?
No, I asked it already, but...
Well, do I like TIF? It's a tool that can be used, but I think more often it's abused. I think a good example inward one is the Allianz Field. When that was rolled out, when the plans were rolled out in 2015, I think, the drawings showed hotels and office towers and residential apartments, and it was going to be great. It's going to be amazing, all this stuff around Allianz Field, and we just needed this TIF district to do it. And what's there now? It's a parking lot. It's a big empty parking lot with fences around it. I have to say that, that is a, you know, the field itself, very nice, yes, but huge disappointment, all the, the knock-on growth that was supposed to happen, none of it happened, not one thing. And I have to say, like, this happens, I think this happens more often than not with TIF districts. The big promises made, the developer, you know, gets their money, you know, they, they're tax-free for a while, and then nothing happens. So I'd say in general, I'm against it.
Ms. Jen?
Same here. In general, I'm against that, because for the same reason, it's, I think there's very few times you have to, there will be case, I wouldn't say there is no, it's, it's absolute, but I think it's really case-by-case basis, and one has to be really well-equipped to calculate the whole financial picture behind it, rather than listen to the developer. We never should begging developer come to invest in us. Rather, we should build our own infrastructure, we should increase our residents, because the moment we have strong, there is more people living in our place, I think we will attract the business. So we never should begging business, we should make our places safer, make our own infrastructure focus on our core service, make our infrastructure better, and building our condo, because that's actually really my goal, is have more affordable homeownership. If we can do that, I hope developer want to come, rather than the other way around. Begging never resulting anything fruitful.
Thank you. Okay, time for the one-minute closes, and we're going to have my assistant over there put his foot down when you get to one minute. So we're going to start though at that end, Mr. Lowe, and work backwards towards Mr. Zeitler. Mr. Lowe?
All right, well, thank you. Mr. Ducking, and both you two, as moderator, I'm running because I love St. Paul, grew up here in St. Paul, the opportunity here in St. Paul is just amazing with the diversity here. And, you know, I'm also, as a long-term resident, raising my own seven kids are in St. Paul. I'm very invested here. My goal, my vision is to make St. Paul better. And there's a lot of things that we have to work on, affordable housing, less crime, you know, prioritize our core services, snow removal, or pojos, you know, quality education, more parks and recs, you know. And there's a lot of things that we have to do here in St. Paul. Historical preservation, there's a lot of things that we need to work on and prioritize. So as your next city council member, one thing that I will promise you is this, as a resident, is to listen to you, to represent your voice at City Hall, and to continue to champion, to make sure that your voice is heard, because oftentimes, decision are made behind closed door, and we go to city council meeting and we're not listened to. So I would definitely do that to champion that. Thank you.
And Ms. Worley?
Thank you. Well, I love St. Paul so much. I love our great restaurants, our diversity, I love the Victorian charm, and I, I basically love it living here, it's why I'm running. As far as my candidacy, I have three primary goals. I'd like to have better infrastructure for cycling. We needed that 10 years ago. We're starting to get it, and I like, I like where we're going with it, but we could be doing a lot better. I would like to have roads that are closed off to motorized traffic. I think that would have a hugely beneficial transformative effect on the city. I would love to make our roads and crosswalks more handicapped accessible and other city infrastructure as well. I would also like to have more clean energy, using St. Paul District Energy, having a municipal energy option that is all clean energy, like, you know, wind and solar. And then another thing I would like to do is have more native plantings on city property. We have a catastrophic decline in our insect population, including pollinators. So yeah, thank you.
Mr. Said?
Well, thank you. Thanks for having us. Thank you for St. Paul Strong, for having us this. And my name is Omar Said. I'm your candidate, city council Ward 1. I grew up here in St. Paul, and, you know, I came here as a refugee 25 years ago, and as a refugee in St. Paul, in Ward 1, and the city that welcomes me, that I have a business, I have a small business in here in St. Paul. And I am a father-husband, and I also city planning commission, and I'm a vice director of zoning city of St. Paul. My vision is clear, that I will be representing to you as a city council is that housing. And we need to have more affordable housing in here in St. Paul. And I grew up public housing. Yes, we need to do more home, home, homeownerships, and also affordable housing. Thus will be my goal, to make sure that a Ward 1 has affordable housing. And, and also...
Ms. Jen?
I decided to run for the city council position two years ago with a single agenda, that is crime reduction. It is quite amazing how much I have learned and developed, especially in the past few months. I decided the most important part of being an elected official is being accountable. I want voters to hold me accountable for reducing crime, improve city infrastructure, and safeguard our land for future development, that will make an impact to the financial well-being of our current and future residents. With that, I hope I will earn your vote on November 7th.
Thank you. Ms. Zeitler?
Thank you. I too love St. Paul, and I think we all love St. Paul here. And that's, that's also why I'm running. I have a few things that I'm, I want to see done. First is taxes. I want to see the taxes stay where they are. Property taxes, the sales taxes, I want to keep them where they are. It's high enough, businesses are leaving, we can't have that. The next thing, streets. Keep the streets plowed and patched and do without raising taxes, because there's a lot of pet programs, or pet projects that people are working on in the city that could be done at the state level, maybe at the national level. That shouldn't be done by the city. The city's job is to maintain infrastructure and provide public safety. And the last thing I'd like to see done is reasonable city planning. My background is as a landscape architect, and I was a business owner. I know a little bit about city planning. I've actually done some urban planning. I think the number one thing that we need to focus on in St. Paul is keeping our historic infrastructure, keeping it beautiful. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, so, you know, thank you for giving of your time to care about the city of St. Paul, to want to put your best feet forward to make us a better city. I really congratulate all of you on wanting to run for office. That's a wonderful thing. The election is November 7. Early voting is already happening. For the folks out there watching this, it's going to be on several times between now and Election Day, and it's available on the SPNN website, that if you don't watch it on their TV when they put it on the cable, you can also see it on the website. Ward 1, by the way, folks, is on the map back there, and it basically goes from the state Capitol out Summit Avenue as far as Snelling, cuts back in, and then goes up on Lexington up to Front Street, which is, there it is now, which is above the railroad tracks, above Minnehaha Avenue, and then curls back to 35E and back to the Capitol. And so if you live in that neighborhood, you got some great candidates to think about before Election Day, and make sure everybody goes to vote. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
[music]